Evening folks online, we're just doing the final details here, hang, take.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Since everyone has an opportunity to read the minutes from our last meeting, last week, on the 30th of September, and if so, does anyone have any edits or additions?
Nope.
If no edits needed, could I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes, school, school committee meeting minutes of 9:30, 2024.
Second, all in paper?
Aye.
Aye. So hello everyone, thank you for joining us this evening. We are joined by...
This evening, Madam Chair, we have Amy Dawn K. Bowles, Kayla Harrington, and Nancy Caggiano. And there are no members online, and you have three members here.
Thank you so much. Mariana is unable to make it this evening, she's not feeling very well.
I'll just spell Bowles again, can we?
It's B-O-L-E-S.
So moving on to correspondence and community input. Does anyone in the audience have anything that they would like to share? I don't see any. Have any school committee member received any correspondence?
I have none.
I actually provide some correspondence on my own behalf about how the allergies are handled at the cafeteria in the school. And Principal Andrews and his staff have been wonderful about addressing the issue and resolving any issues that we've had about non-life-threatening allergies being put at an allergen table. And I think that we're gonna, the school is gonna be making some adjustments to improve how students with allergies are handled during cafeteria. So it was a really great experience. I just wanted to say that I thought Principal Andrews and the staff handled it great, and they responded quickly and, I think appropriately, so, yeah.
Awesome. It's good to hear. Would you mind sharing a little bit, intrusive of protocol regarding the changes that you would like to make, Principal Andrews, to...
Before, the way that it was handled is, students with allergies, even if they were not life-threatening, had to sit at a specific table. And it turned out that there aren't very many students in the school that have that issue. So this table ended up being not very populated, and a lot of the kids wanted to sit at other tables. So my daughter happens to have a peanut allergy that's non-life-threatening, and she just felt like she was being excluded at lunch, and that that wasn't really appropriate based on the way that her allergy presents. So the other issue was that she was sitting with another student that we didn't know that she had a specific allergy, and my daughter brought something in that was allergen for her. So the other issue I think that could be resolved is if parents were notified what allergies are present in the school, then I think that that could help a lot to prevent any potential interaction. Because right now, parents have just sold allergies, non-allergies, certain kids can sit at peanut tables, certain kids can sit here or there, and it's just not, I think it's not very well defined for parents. We're trying to put together lunch and snack for their kids in the morning. So we've been trying to just discuss ways to improve communication with the parents and make kids not feel so excluded because they may have a food allergy. Again, we're a school of inclusion, and I think that at lunch is all the more important.
Of course, no, absolutely, we want to be inclusive but also very cognizant of the fact that some children do have life-threatening allergies. So I just want to make sure that paramount importance is that all kids receive. And I'm very curious as to, do we have a procedure in place, is there a policy in place? And I do know personally, we have some children who have passive have had severe allergies, and I know that there were protocols that were in place, but I don't know what's in place now.
I'd be happy to let you know about that. So we have some, we don't have a policy in place, which would be your policy, but we do have protocols in place which are documented, and these are for students with life-threatening allergies. The protocols we have do not identify assigned seating in the cafeteria, and the practices that we have in place do assign seating in the cafeteria. So we have a practice of assigning seating in the cafeteria for students who have allergies, and we have a protocol that calls for us to meet with parents, teachers, the principal, healthcare workers, to develop a medical plan so that we can all be in agreement on what steps and what interventions we would take, much like a five-of-a-four plan. When a student has a condition, you meet with the parent, you talk about what accommodations they would need to be able to be successful, to be comfortable, and safe, number one, safe in the cafeteria. And so you review the health conditions that they have, determine if those health conditions require special accommodation, and if they do, the parent weighs in and the staff weighs in and talks about what we need to do to keep them comfortable. And so we looked at our protocols and really kind of identifying, you know, how are we using those protocols right now? And how are we going to use those protocols going forward? I think that we want to review, you know, how we keep parents involved in that process, and also make sure it's best practice for kids.
Of course, and that they're safe.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Safety was always the number one issue. And again, I think including the parents is, you know, a good step because they know what is safe and not at times, you know? And again, for my daughter, she's...
It's not a life-threatening.
Yeah, so, you know, for her to be put at a certain table wasn't working out. But for other kids, you know, the parents get to weigh in and say what they think should work for their child.
And to your point in regards to letting parents know if there are children that have severe allergies, are there certain products that should be avoided being brought into the school?
Sure, we have a list of nine items that should not, well, nine categories, including shellfish, strawberries, milk. So it's pretty broad, depending on the year. And so we want to make sure that parents know what they are at the time that a student is enrolled and participating in lunch, and make sure that they know that those allergens are not allowed at the allergen free table.
Oh, right, oh, because I have strawberries all the time.
Okay.
That, I guess that was the thing that Blake and I were running into was, if you're at the allergy table, then you can't have any allergen, even if it's not even present in the school.
Yeah.
But if you're not at the allergen table, then you can have whatever you want, and it's kind of a free-for-all. And we just found that to be like, okay, well, there's, you know, it's a small school community, that's part of the benefit of being here in the heart. And if we have four allergies or three allergies in the school at the time, that the parents should know that so that those three things don't come in. But strawberries, for instance, I mean, how many kids probably come into school with strawberries each day? And sesame's is another one, you know, you can't send hummus in.
Right.
But, how many?
I was just saying that.
So I'm just saying that in order to make it more, so that if we don't need an allergen table, if people knew, don't send in these three things, then we wouldn't even have to worry about this issue. To an extent, if the parents of the allergy child agree, you know, I mean, if they want an allergen table, there should be an allergen table. But I just think that there are modifications that could be made, given the size of our school. And again, I think it's an education thing, I mean, a lot of people don't know that strawberries are an allergen.
Yeah.
That can't be at that table. And we just found that it turned out to be that there were only a couple of kids there. So it turned out to be an exclusion type of thing, and that's just not what I think we're trying to do there.
It worked, everybody's worked their way through it.
Yeah, they've been, and the school's been phenomenal about work.
One of, it says, she knows no longer here because he graduated, but he was here through this whole life. And his mom is a good friend of mine, and she is remarked on how, you know, he has a life-threatening allergy, and like the most severe I've heard of. And, and she was just frowning, like just the safety that she felt because of the care that they take here, you know? I always think that you can have an organic situation with a certain, you know, amount of staff, you always want to try to make it more of a policy. So I appreciate where you're coming from as the parent of a kid with an allergy. Um, but I do think that there is a predisposition here to wanting to make it work. You know, and really being knowledgeable about allergies because that, that student is doing fine.
And Madam Chair, for me, I think it's important to look at each student as an individual.
Sure, of course.
Think about what condition they have.
Yeah.
And what the impact would be if they were exposed to it. And then discuss with the family what next steps would be necessary to keep them, uh, comfortable and safe.
Yes, absolutely, because it is that life threatening piece that terrifies me actually.
Yeah.
I know you too.
And not to, I mean, the, what I see coming out of this conversation is like, you can imagine being a parent of kids that don't right now have any allergies. If I was told, don't, you know, pack any, any strawberries, and then the next year, they said, oh, poor strawberry, strawberries are fine. And then two years later, you have to, you know, learn about strawberries again. That might be like, that's a lot of up and down. So like, if there were like a group of things that, that occur more nowadays, you know, to stay away from. I mean, we'll say, I, I, some advice from some, uh, the nurse, some nutritionists about various kinds of snacks you could pack. Because my list is dwindling even in this conversation, um, would be good, you know, to come along with that. To help, you know, spark some creativity, at which I have none. Um, and, uh, and so, but I do think like, you know, if that comes up a lot, say, you know, we can't do misthings. But here's like nine other things you can pack that itself.
Yeah, suggested snacks, and I think that's upon a time we did have that list too, circulating, and you remember a list.
Put it down.
Yeah, that would be very helpful, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if there is no further community input, then we can launch the examination and authorization for the payment of bills.
Great bills?
How do you spell it?
The, um, first set there, Amazon, Home Depot, are supply accounts. And most of those come from Esra funds, the use of the Esra three funds that were left on the table at the end. Who are not directly coming out of the budget, so we may see that indicated on some of those bill statements. Where the actual sources of funding is for those. Uh, Lexia Renaissance are, um, software programs for data and accountability for teachers. These are pizzas lunch, school specialty is, uh, Esra funding. Community play thing, kind of a strange name, is preschool cubbies, is what those are. I was interested in that myself. Uh, Metro Group is for water treatment and Re-Elevator is a monthly, uh, fee. Mostly for inspection. Um, Stop and Shop is lunch. Worthington Direct was for carpets, that was bought with Esra, so some of the worn out carpets. Second Page Apple, uh, also Esra, I mean iPads and computer related items. E-Monti and Sons were for the finishing up of the screen project. Again, that came from Esra to keep, uh, rodents and other animals from entering the building. Uh, Town Swamp Scott, Swamp Scott is tuition. Uh, Quadrant Leasing, I wondered what that was, that's a postage meter. Uh, A1 Exterminator is a, uh, monthly pest control outside cost, we have a service for that. Easter CEOs is sped tuition. Uh, Gabby Rattermacher is a tuition, the contract reimbursement. North Shore Education Consortium is sped tuition. Uh, there's my cell phone reimbursement there. I wondered what AT&amp;T forty-nine seventy-one was, that's long distance charge. Believe it or not, for any long distance calls that are made on the school system, there's a surcharge for that apparently, so. Forty-nine seventy-one is not exorbitant. And National Grid is the, uh, electric bill. That would give the total of six fifty-four, five hundred twelve. And you, you had a separate one from the packet itself, was, you signed a separate distribution where. Those items near the end were added.
Yeah, starting at Easter CEO.
Yeah, everything from, there was an additional apple bill, an additional Monty Suns, and then a bunch.
I think the North Shore might not have, I think the original sheet you got distributed ended somewhere up at the exterminator, I think.
Yeah.
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 So, true code would be six fifty-four, five hundred and twelve cents?
Oh, I've got six fifty-three, three forty-five.
What do you have?
Six.
I have six fifty-three.
Motion to approve the expenditure of six hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred dollars and twelve cents. To pay the invoices with a rate of ten eight twenty, twenty-four.
Second, all in favor of that? Okay, so moving on to the principal's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, happy to present this. Uh, first, I wanna start off with the actual update, which has been going on for some meetings now. Uh, we, the, uh, the YMCA, I am in constant contact with, with respect to trying to help them hire folks for our site. We have a program coordinator. Uh, the original, uh, ask was for them, that they were looking for a second person at fifteen dollars an hour. And I explained to them that I didn't think that they were gonna be able to get somebody to work the program at that rate. Uh, they increased it to twenty to twenty-two dollars an hour, which came very close to their break even point. Uh, for our enrollment for the after-school program. Uh, even with that rate, they've not been able to get a second person to work the program. Um, so I wanted to let you know this evening that. Hiring folks in this area, in this, in this part of Massachusetts, at rates like this is challenging. And I think, uh, Nahat makes it a bit more challenging, is what I'm understanding. Um, they're working with folks and, uh, they're, they're based in Lynn, and they're talking to folks, you wanna go over to Nahat? And, um, and work for, you know, extended, uh, fees. And they're just, we're just not able to get anybody. They're, they're not able to get anybody right now. Um, I've reached out to our staff, um, I've put it on indeed.com. And again, they're just not able to get a second person, so I am gonna be meeting with them again tomorrow. Um, but I'm, I'm wondering what's gonna be the next step. I'm not certain, uh, we have about fifteen to sixteen people, sixteen students on a given day. And so I, I think staffing challenges, uh, is something that they're facing right now. And I'm wondering if we're gonna start looking at having students who go to our school. Leave and go to the brand new center over in Lynn that has great facility and has programming available. Um, so, you know, that was on the agenda for our last meeting, uh, for my last meeting with the Y. Um, but I really encourage them to increase the ask for the salary. And, um, despite that, we, they've had four or five interviews. Um, but folks just haven't taken the offer, even though they knew what the requirement was and the, the pay rate was. Um, so I wanted to update you on that.
Yes, if Lynn becomes an option, would transportation be provided?
I expect so, the Y has transportation, they transport them all to their other sites. Um, to the, um, trying to think of the name of the, the gentleman who owns Good Neighbor. Uh, Chicken and Eric over in, in Lynn, Lynn. Uh, the new, the, the new, uh. Trying to think of the name of the new Y in Lynn, but that, that's the one that it is, maybe going there.
And would, would anyone here, uh, one of our teachers be interested in? I know once upon a time, you know, the school ran that.
Sure, yeah, so in the past, we had paraprofessionals that stayed past their regular day. And we would do, and I ran it, I was the director, and we had two or three folks at, you know, each day, um, that would stay. Right now, our paraprofessionals have their students at the school, and they're not in an after-school program, they're in sports and things like that. And so I haven't directly asked folks that would, might be interested in something like that, if they would be interested in, in working, and they haven't said yes. Um, I put it in the bulletin, my morning announcements. Um, and this is, um, competitive with the rate that we're paying paraprofessionals. Um, teachers hourly is something around forty dollars, which I think is still. Uh. An economic billable rate for what, you know, folks are making out, out there in Massachusetts now. So I think that, you know, twenty to twenty-two dollars an hour is, it would be challenging to have a teacher. You know, a certified teacher work that after school, um, unless it was a stopgap, which is what we've been doing. We've been filling it with stopgap measures to, you know, make sure that we had a program here in the meantime. So Riley Edmonds has been fantastic, she's been working at our counselor, um, at the teacher rate, uh, which is forty dollars an hour. Um, but with fifteen students, uh, it's hard, and we really do need two staff members at once, just to have bathroom breaks. You know, just to have snack time and things like that. So the, the challenge we have is that, you know, with, with our numbers of students in the school available. It, it's a, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit challenging to run a program like that with fewer than. Three, three staff members, and you wanna have somebody in case of somebody being upset.
Mr. Andrews, I think one thing that's hard is like, my daughter is eighteen and was making twenty-five dollars an hour for babysitting here in the hut. Parents pay twenty-five thousand, twenty-five dollars an hour for, for babysitting, we pay, we've paid that.
Yeah.
And for teenagers, not even, I'm talking about paraprofessionals, some who have that much experience. So I think like, we might be priced out, you know, at this amount of money.
Yeah.
Um, and that's babysitting for like a few kids versus fifteen kids.
Yeah.
Conversely, I actually find the trans, if transportation were provided and kids went to a facility. Where there's like all kinds of things going on.
Yeah.
I actually think that's even more attractive, not because it's not like really sweet here, you know, to have this convenience and be in your school. But that just the sheer facilitiness of it would provide a very attractive option. But nobody's gonna drive home from Boston to take a kid to.
How would that work though with the dual time pickup?
I imagine that you'd, you'd pick up in Lynn, uh, in Demarcus Center, that's what, that's the name of the center. Uh, I'd imagine you'd pick up in Lynn, a lot of folks are working in Boston, it's on the way home. Um, and they do, they have classes, they have karate, they have, they have, you know, they have a pool, they have all kinds of different things. One, one, the, the Monday, uh, person that comes here is a swim instructor. So they, we do have two people on Monday, one person from the Y, and he's a swim instructor, he's great. He's, you know, he's twenty or nineteen, he's the second person that we have, and he teaches, uh, swimming in, in Lynn. And, um, on Mondays, he's here. Uh, so I, I think it could be a great option, uh, in, in terms of extracurriculars, uh, crafts. When you have more students, you have more choices. So the, the, it, it does, you know, we've only really been able to offer homework support and games. And I think with something like what they have, the Demarcus Center.
Is it on Neptune Street over there?
I haven't been there.
Is it right in the Market, Market Street area?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's, they're, the kids hockey rink is down there, it takes about seven minutes to get there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a great option. Um, I haven't really discussed it with them solidly, but I think that if we don't have a second person, you know, that would be the next step.
I think where parents' biggest concern would be safety, with what safety measures are at the Y.
Sure, sure. Uh, next up, I have the Boobash, the YMCA, I mean, the, uh, PTO is putting that on on October nineteenth. Uh, always an annual favorite for, uh, parents and kids alike, and we're looking for volunteers. So if you're interested, you can get in touch with Mariana Hire or myself, and I can forward it along, uh, for that event. And that'll be hopefully outside, uh, but if it doesn't happen, we are making the indoor of the facility available.
Oh, nice.
In the area of technology, we've been working with Clever, which is an organization that provides easy login for students. So instead of students having to type a login information, now they show a QR code to their computer. It shows them a screen, and then there's a whole bunch of links that come up. So they don't have to log into IXL, they don't have to log into their computer, you know, how much of a hassle it is to log into different websites. So Clever syncs with our student information database. And then it, it pulls that, and then it uses that information just to help the students log in and make it easier. And make those, those technologies more accessible to everybody. And it's going swell, uh, we have some new QR codes for teachers, and we, we programmed it, and it's really working out nicely. Uh, in the area of curriculum instruction, I wanted to let you know that I'm writing a grant for the local cultural council. And this is for weaving with natural fibers and plants. So looking to have a, a local, uh, person work with students to dye wool. And then also weave it into a, a small, uh, item they could take home. Uh, looking at this for the springtime, but we're looking to use the plants that we've been growing around the school, goldenrod, pokey weed. Bring in onion skins and use those to, uh, dye raw wool. And then use a cardboard, uh, weaving tool to make a trivet. And so that's a, a grant I'm putting together. And then I want to update you on the STAR assessment, the first round is underway. Uh, we met today for our professional development time, we have ten hours a year for one hour sessions after school. Today, we met and talked about the STAR assessment, which, uh, to remind you, is aligned closely with the MCAS. So we wanna use this to predict how students are doing to get ready for the MCAS. And it's only a thirty minute per trimester assessment, uh, we're not doing it in kindergarten, we're starting in first grade. Uh, in a first grade and second grade, it's only math, because we don't have a regular, uh, online assessment that we can easily access the data from. Uh, grades three to six, we're using it for, uh, ELA and math. The ELA component is gonna be about, uh, comprehension, and that's something that's assessed on the MCAS. And so this will give us our teachers an idea of who do we think might be at risk for not doing well in the MCAS? Or not really, I shouldn't say that, we're not teaching you the test, we wanna make sure students are meeting their best potential. And so, uh, I, I believe the STAR assessment will help us with that, it's a pilot. And so after the school year, I'll bring it to you and see if you feel like, uh, it was worthy of supporting going forward. And it's to replace the i-ready in math that we've moved away from. Because i-ready, um, wasn't quite meeting with the state wanted for their literacy side of things. Uh, I'm building the grounds, we have final drafts of the signs, which I don't have in front of me, but perhaps during another part of the meeting, I can scoot back to my office. And send you, um, colored copies of those. I showed you the drafts, you have the same drafts, um, that I showed you last time for these signs. But the graphic artist created a, a, a fourth sign that we could swap out. And it's a superhero theme, talking about how pollinators are our superheroes. And how pollinators can really help us make our food, get our honey, make flowers grow. And, and do all the great things that, uh, we see in the gardens. So, um, that's, uh, a big, again, Peg Curran, very active member, uh, retired member of the. Nahat Cultural Council and also the Garden Club. And she's been volunteering her time, probably to the tune of fifteen hundred dollars, I'd say, based on the work I've seen. Uh, phenomenal woman, um, and she's been great. So, um, I might be able to sneak down and get you some copies of those so you could, uh, have a look. And then finally, on staffing updates. Um, I wanted to let you know that our tech support individual, Tyler Nong, um, has announced that he will be resigning. He hasn't resigned yet, but he will be resigning, um, because he has some family issues to attend to. He's a young guy, but he has a family in Lynn that he's helping support, and he's willing to stay on. While we look for a new technology support individual. Um, and I've been able to interview three individuals, um, and Mr. Lebo's been able to meet with those folks as well. And so we're hoping to bring someone on this week and have them start next week. Uh, and so, uh, there'll be some good continuing, uh, continuity. Uh, the, the finalist that I'm recommending to superintendent is someone who's worked fifteen years in the industry. Lives in Melrose, he's a stay-at-home dad who wants part-time. And so, uh, it's great, he, he wants to, you know, stay current. Um, and he's worked, his, his favorite operating system is Mac OS, which is what we use. And, uh, he used to work at the Pioneer, uh, Valley Charter School in Beverly. And so I'll get you his resume, um, once Mr. Lebo meets with him and, um, and meets the expectation for what we're looking. And, um, and meets the expectation for what we're looking for. And so, um, Tyler's been fantastic at the school, um, but as I mentioned, uh. He has some, he has some things at home that he wants to help out with, and he's gonna be also, he's also a student at North Shore Community College.
Great, great, thank you. Mr. Andrews, sorry, what was the cultural grant proposal, cultural council grant proposal for?
Sure, it's for, uh, weaving with. Native plants. Even weaving with native plants, we we've been dying with native plant, I'm sorry.
Moving on to old business, an update on fulfilling the upcoming school committee member vacancy. Well, this evening, a letter of intent was sent to myself and to Kristin Taylor. And I have the pleasure of knowing this individual, and Kepa knows her very well, Meredith Tivo. She is a former retired teacher here at the Johnson School. Um, she taught fifth grade, one of my son's absolute favorite teachers, and she is fantastic, she would be. A welcome addition to this team. So, thank you, Meredith. So the next steps would be, um, my understanding is that during the next board of selectmen meeting. We would join the school committee with the Board of Selectmen. And it will be a vote, um, between the Board of Selectmen and the school committees to bring her on. Where she falls outside the typical standard election by the town. And then. When it rolls around, if I remember correctly, she would have to go through the process. Um, for the remaining piece of the term.
Uh, when would that meeting be, Ms. Andrews?
That is a very good question, I do not know when the next board meeting is. It just came this evening, actually.
And it's a regular meeting?
It would be a regular meeting, we will be tacked on as an agenda item to their meeting. And so I'm sure Krista will write back, letting us know, and I'll let you guys know when that meeting will be held, because we need to like. Onto that meeting. And that's how I joined the school committee, I'm just trying, it was a while ago, I'm just trying to remember all the steps in my mind, I'm like, oh yes, I met with everybody over Zoom. I'm not sure if the board is still meeting over Zoom or if they're meeting in person in the U K's.
Have the Zoom connection. But I'm sure you can go in person too, yeah.
Would love to.
Times change.
But, you know, I'm very happy.
The town's calendar is not updated, so.
More to follow, but, um, that is fabulous news. Um, so moving on to new business.
Actually, better real quickly, we skipped over superintendent's report, and I think that's because we.
I'm so sorry.
Those from each other.
That's right.
So I mean, I don't have a huge report, but, um, sure, the audience is waiting in. But, uh, first, November first at PD, we have, uh, set up with, uh, either sergeant or lieutenant more now. Sure, what his official title is, would assume is lieutenant, to come and do a two-hour professional development. For our staff on lockdown procedures, especially with a lot of new staff, in terms of safety, we want to make sure you folks knew that. And, um. If you happen to attend Boobash, this is the biggest announcement. There's a celebrity cook and his wife will be attending that, and they specialize in, uh, burnt hot dogs. That'd be myself and my wife are gonna volunteer, I saw the connection come and I said. First chance in the voting season is over to do something, meet people was at Boobash.
You will love it.
Sign myself up.
It's wonderful, it is wonderful, yeah.
Looking forward to it very much. And just a quick update, uh, one of my goals was to try to facilitate the eventual. Building of a greenhouse here on the property, uh, that would be barn-raised by the community. And would allow our garden to extend throughout the winter. And I originally applied to a foundation and told it didn't quite meet their characteristics. But as my father told me, never give up, I went sort of around Robin Hood's barn and have connection with. One of the major reasons why the foundation exists, and they're very interested in talking to us about. How a greenhouse could happen. So I have some meetings set up, and they just want to know how it's gonna be integrated into stuff, and, uh. I'm hopeful that this spring, we'll be able to put a greenhouse up on the property. It's not just a plastic pot, it'll be a real greenhouse that the kids are involved in, they get to be. Part of their classwork and helping to harvest and plant. Maybe, uh, also providing a food pantry, you know, the idea of giving back. And that kind of stuff, if they happen to be more fortunate that they're able to see that people aren't, you know, can benefit from their own work and their own growing. Uh, we did something like that in Rockport and raised all the money in the community, and what we really needed here was a point person for that. And without going into any names, we have been able to get the interest of a significant point person. That says they will help us with the property, so. That pleases me, because it will allow us to move forward in something I really wanted to do. And that's the spirit of the school, as you saw with, uh, MCAS Core Science was was sky high. And kids having practical, hands-on experience with sustainability. Really important, so.
That is so exciting, um, and I think, you know, district emphasis put its heart and soul into the science program here. In all kinds of experiential ways, so that would be such a great addition. At one of my schools, we did build a greenhouse with a grant, I just emailed, um. Somebody there to, uh, remind me where we got those dollars, and I'll share that with you.
Anyway, that's my report.
That's great, that's wonderful.
So moving on to the enrollment report.
Right, so what we have tonight is a piece of it, because this is the present October first enrollment at the Johnson School. What it doesn't include is the Swampsket teams or anybody in private, a private school or charter schools. That has to be formulated, submitted to the state, so we'll have one sort of follow-up in a later meeting. But right now, your total enrollment is one sixty-three, there are nine sixth graders. Remember, we had started with, uh, six or seven at one point. Uh, there are twelve fifth graders, twenty-four fourth graders, fifteen third graders, eighteen second graders. Grade one is split still with thirteen and fifteen. Uh, for a total of twenty-eight, twenty-one kindergarteners and thirty-six in preschool. So, holding steady that way, um, the. Individual that has come in and provided us our ELL work from Swampsket is working out very well. Um, so that's. Helping in terms of the two ELL students that are in those those classes, especially some of the big ones.
And how would those, I don't want that. I'm just asking a general question in terms of how are they acclimating to the school, that must be very challenging, where English is not a primary language for them.
I'd say that, um, they're being welcomed, uh, I know that I hear that often on the students talking about, what language do they speak, what do they know? And I I found that everyone's been very welcoming, I I I do find that they're working to integrate the students, I I think you're right. Um, I have to say, Ms. Russine has done a phenomenal job, she's, you go into the cursive class, she's written the cursive, um, writing for the day. And then she's written in Portuguese, uh, she's using the technology to translate everything, and she doesn't know Portuguese. Um, but she's doing it, and we have two pairs in there as a reminder, one that worked in Spain for two years. Not the same languages, uh, Portuguese, but she's really willing to work with the technology and that student. Uh, in a, in a close way to help them, so. I think it's going as as well as it could, and, um, you know, the students not, certainly not falling through the cracks. Um, they're front of mind.
To, the title nine policy, first reading.
Okay, so on your table, and I think I sent it near there, this is a large packet. Of policies that all relate to Title Nine harassment, discrimination. A lot of these you would have worked through last year. And. Adopted, updated, Tony went through all the policy stuff, and this summer. Mask and, um, the state laws changed. And they issued a whole bunch of either new or replacements policies. In December of twenty-four, and we will have to do adoption, uh, but this would be considered the first reading tonight. Come back the next time with the second reading and adoption. But, um, I've written at the top. What each policy is, so for instance, old AC. And then the new AC, which is non-discrim, non-discrimination policy, including harassment and retaliation. So you would be doing away with your old policy, updating with this new policy. The old policy was from, I believe, twenty-one. Yep, December of twenty-one, and this new one is from July twenty-four, there's very subtle differences in it. And to be honest, I haven't had a chance to pick out exactly where those are. These are issued by the, um. Massachusetts Association of School Committees, and they do need to be adopted, so this being a first reading, you will have some time to study them. But, um, your old policy is now really outdated in some ways, and they reflect, you know. Small changes in the law are adding a category away. So, um. You can either move one at a time, I think you could accept the slate as a first reading. And then when you come back in your second reading, you can go specifically, remove AC, add new AC. Or whatever, but I wanted to run through all of them. The second one is sexual harassment policy, it's the old ACAB. And that one has a new ACAB. And then if it just says, the next line is an old ACR. Non-discrimination policy includes harassment and retaliation. And then a new ACR. And then there's one that's just plain old, a new ACA, it's not replacing anything, it's brand new policy. Where it says at the top, new ACA. So I probably put these in order, where if it was being removed, it would say, old one, new one, old one, new one. And in this case, brand new one, there is no old one, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. But it is a required policy, and again, it was July twenty-four, and this is your chance to have your. First reading of it.
So can I ask a question?
Yep.
That may sound silly, you're saying required, these words, do we have any option? To adopt these?
I would say no on these, these are all right from the legal statutes of the law. And you're required to have the Title Nine and discrimination policies that reflect the law. There may be some subtle little part of it that you get some discretion on, but. In general, I do not believe that you have the ability to craft your own version of it. And that's what mask does for you as your association, is take these. Old policies and update them to new law, which Tony would have done a lot with you last year. But this was a flurry of them, all in one package. So there's a little bit of a leap of faith here, I understand that's, uh, for someone who's involved in the legal profession, that's not a, a, a.
Well, no, I'm not asking for a leap of faith, I'm saying, are they, are they required by statute to have these policies in place?
Title nine, yes.
So, I mean, what are we debating?
I don't think you're debating anything.
Process of just formally, um.
That's.
Basically just getting.
I'm just trying to give my, yeah, okay.
Trying to confirm that.
And and then, and then when we meet next, it's considered the second reading. For this, now there are other policies that we both.
Yeah, but this is like.
But Title Nine is, yeah, is statutory.
So we're not.
We're not gonna sit there and, you know, oh, we don't agree with this, we're gonna modify the language, no.
Uh, sure, I just wanted to get my, thank you.
Exactly, and, uh. You're just, you have to go through a required process of extinguishing old policies, first reading new ones. Uh, second reading new ones and adopting, and then we all get into a large policy manual that will be online. That's in the process of even doing the stuff that you had done last year, probably isn't.
Is it possible to run a redline on this?
Uh, that's a good question, I mean, is it? I think, I think you can get the redline version through MASC, no?
I have never seen the redline version.
Maybe because we have to adopt them, they don't even bother doing that, I know Tony would read them side by side, not suggesting you do that.
But if we have, do we have to adopt the individual changes, that's what I'm.
We just, uh, whole, whole policy. And I was in your chair when we started doing this, I could not believe it, we're talking like three hundred of them, it was nuts.
And Chris didn't think there might be.
Want to make sure we don't have to go through ourselves and say, oh, this has changed.
We're supposed to read them.
Not, 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 not.
Chris did think there might be that sort of redline version somewhere that mask has for us. If there is, I will download it and get it sent to you.
Yeah.
But this is all I was provided with, here's the old policy, here's the new policy. And frankly, when I started to look at like the first one, I couldn't find any difference. Tell it was like one word.
No, no.
Look through all those pages if it wasn't, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So I'll see if I can get the redline version.
Um, and, and, uh, Rob, I'm the superintendent, the, if it says new and there's no old, it means this is a new policy, correct?
Correct, I don't, I try to put them right in order where like we started, there's an old one, that's gonna go, new one's right after.
Yep.
If it just comes, there's no old one, says new, brand new policy. That's been required by law.
Okay.
So I don't think you have to, in your first reading, state. New ACR first reading accomplished, and read all those out, I think you can. Move the slate as a first reading as presented. The next time you come back, you're gonna have to go do away with, add at your next meeting. When you actually adopt the policy.
We read the, uh, the headline of the policy, not, not the policy itself.
Removing all the old policy AR, adopting policy AR, whatever.
Yeah.
And for June twenty, whatever the date of the policy is. So, it's usually not this cumbersome, because they come in as singletons, this came as this package.
Okay, so I, I think, uh, do we need to make any kind of motion in terms of reviewing the first reading of the updated Title Nine policies in its entirety? So yes, we should do a.
Um, just what you just said.
Motion to review the first. Uh, the first reading of, uh, updated Title Nine policies.
Second, all in favor?
Is there any other committee business that we would like to discuss?
Well, Madam Chair, I do have those, uh, draft signs that I'd like to share with you briefly, uh, the new one is, uh, now just passing down. This is the new one that you haven't seen before, native flower power, the superhero theme, the great thing about these signs that it can be changed. This one is a custom version of the, um, of the garden sign that we had, and thi- this one is. Similar to the one you already saw, but she took a picture of our kids where the, uh, veterans were in nineteen forties. And so she went up to the playground, Peggy did, and took a picture of the kids on the playground. And so it shows you where all the, you know, commandons were, and then where our kids are now. And then you've, you've seen the bat sign before, uh, the nice thing about these, they can be. And then you've, you've seen the bat sign before, uh, the nice thing about these, they can be interchanged. And so we have three spaces for signs. Um, and our idea is to change them, let the teachers know about them, and then have the students go outside and use the signs uh, for education.
Those are great, thank you.
If you think so, then you should go ahead and make those in larger format, and you'll see them in the yard.
Absolutely, great, thank you. So future agenda items, pre-budget discussion, oh, the joy begins. Is there anything we want to add to that?
No, that'd be just, I mean, we'll bring that either, I think your sheet of what's supposed to occur at every meeting, the second meeting in October is your pre-budget discussion. And um, we'll be able to have that, we have some numbers that are already plugged in. It won't be exact, but it'll be close, you won't have negotiations settled by then.
No.
So that'll have a huge effect with eighty percent of your costs related to staffing. You won't know what those numbers are gonna be yet, so. But in terms of tuition and transportation costs and that kind of stuff, we can look at a rough, rough budget estimate.
And the goal for completing the budget in its entirety would be by February?
Yeah, there's a, I'd love to give you the timeline, too, nobody's talked about it yet at the town level in terms of when you have to present or anything like that. I've got what Tony used last year, I assume it'll be the same general pathway to follow.
And then we have the proposal for the establishment of a curriculum review cycle.
Yeah, that'll be, uh, we're still, you know, talking about that, in terms of exactly what that'll look like, but that'll be critical. How we move forward, Kevin and I have got to carve out the time to discuss exactly what that looks like.
Yeah, no, that sounds great, any announcements? Excellent. If there are no announcements, can we have a motion to adjourn open session to convene into executive session, not to, for the purpose stated on the agenda, not to reconvene into open session?
Motion to convene open session, the vote to executive session pursuant to MGL, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight-three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. Uh, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, not to return to open session. And the chair so declares.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Thank you, everybody, for joining, have a great night. Including yourself.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I will disconnect you, since you have no people online.